Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of San Bruno on March 10, 2015. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide. Assume they're there. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Ed Barberini, would you please leave to the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Announcements, there aren't any special announcements this evening. We do have two presentations. The first is to present a proclamation to the Bay Area Chapter volunteers of the American Red Cross, recognizing American Red Cross Month in 2015. And I'd like to read a portion of this. It's rather long, so I'll just do one or two of the whereas. Whereas, we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now, therefore, I, Jim Ruane, the mayor of the City of San Bruno, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of city and state of California, do hereby proclaim March 2015 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. And I'm going to present this to Betty Fleming. And just before I do, I do want to say once again how much we appreciate the Red Cross and how much you did for us and continue to do for us, especially during the tragedy we had four and a half years ago. So, thank you very much. I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We do appreciate the citizens and the city government of San Bruno for all the cooperation that we have and support. Indeed, we have been close partners, especially since the tragedy that happened four and a half years ago. And in addition, we continue to service residents when they have whatever kind of disaster. In this fiscal year alone, there have already been five local disasters in San Bruno that we've answered. And we're pleased to be able to do that and appreciate the support of the citizens and the government. So, thank you very much. If there are any questions or if anyone has any questions or would like any additional information about Red Cross, I'm more than happy to answer.
Good. Thank you, Betty, and thank you, Red Cross.
Thank you.
Our second presentation, we're going to receive a report on San Mateo County Community Choice Aggregation Initiative for pooled local government energy purchases. Connie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. We have a member of the team that is working with San Mateo County to evaluate the feasibility of a community choice aggregation program in our county modeled on that, which has been successfully implemented in at least one other nearby county in California. I will leave it to him to explain the details of that. Dave Berudo is also in the audience tonight from Supervisor Pine's office, who will be able, at the end of the presentation, he is, he's here somewhere. He's just not, like, here, right here. But he will be here. He'll be able to give us a little bit of detail about the timeline and the process that is associated with moving this interesting and exciting opportunity through the feasibility phase and can outline that after the presentation. So, at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Seth Baruch, who can introduce himself and his credentials and will walk through with PowerPoint some of the interesting aspects of this.
Great, thank you. I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you here this evening. I understand one of you, maybe you've heard this presentation maybe even more than once. Okay, well, I'll try and spice it up, make it a little more interesting for you this time. I don't know, can we get the, I think there's a little, yeah, great, thank you. So, my name is Seth Baruch and I work, I'm an independent consultant but work very closely with Lean Energy U.S. You'll see their little logo on these slides. I've been helping set up community choice programs in several counties, including San Mateo and Alameda. And just tonight, I'm going to try and go through these slides relatively quickly and efficiently and make sure there's plenty of time for Q and A afterwards. So, what do we mean by when we talk about community choice aggregation? There we go. In a nutshell, in one sentence or less, community choice aggregation, or we say CCA, is a mechanism under state law that allows local governments and county governments to aggregate all of the electricity consumers within their territory, it's only electricity, not gas, to create their own program to procure energy on behalf of those customers. The electricity that is procured by the CCA program or generated by the program is transmitted through the existing transmission and distribution entity, in this case PG&E, and delivers electricity as before to individual customers. There are a number of reasons why CCAs have become very popular. There are communities up and down the state that are looking at community choice. It is a hybrid, really, between the investor-owned utility model like PG&E and the municipal utility model like Sacramento and the City of Alameda, in that the, again, the CCA procures the energy, but the utility owns the lines. That said, CCAs have become a very powerful tool because they can help communities really achieve their local environmental economic goals. Most importantly to many people is that it offers a choice where none currently exists. So, right now, PG&E is the only option for electricity generation. This provides, CCA provides, an option. It is completely ratepayer-supported, not taxpayer-subsidized, that's very important. And we've seen in both Marin County, where the first CCA was established, and in Sonoma, that the rates are actually lower, yet the mix, the energy mix, has a higher percentage of renewable energy content. So, it's helping facilitate the accelerated switch to greener, cleaner power sources. And what's I think most interesting about CCA is it really provides a laboratory to try interesting and exciting new initiatives, particularly that are developed on the local level, energy storage, EV charging stations, that kind of thing. We say that CCA is the biggest change that you'll never notice. We say that for a couple of reasons. One is, and I'll just actually skip to this slide, and I'll go back, CCA customers, if, for example, the City of San Bruno joined with the County of San Mateo to establish a CCA program, all the residents and businesses would still get a PG&E bill. It's hard to see on this slide, but if you look at your energy statement, you have, it's divided into generation and transmission and distribution or delivery. So, the generation charge would be the only line item that would change on your bill. The delivery portion is still with PG&E, and when the power goes out, you still call PG&E. So, most people get switched over and they don't even realize there's a difference. Yeah, there you go. It's very important to note that CCAs are opt-out programs. What that means is that, again, if local officials decide they want to set up a community choice program, all energy consumers are automatically enrolled in the program unless they choose to opt out. And there are plenty of opportunities to do that as the program's launching or even after that. So, no one is stuck with a CCA program or PG&E. They can join either, or start with one and join the other anytime. The typical structure of a CCA program is through a joint powers agreement between the cities and the county, and that's how the Marin and Sonoma model has been. We use this slide because it's actually very helpful. This is from the City of San Anselmo Climate Action Plan, and we know that there's, one of the reasons why cities have been so interested in CCA is to help comply or help meet local climate action goals. So, the city in San, the town of San Anselmo and other towns have developed these climate action plans, and they've looked at all the various different options that one has in order to reduce the carbon footprint within their city. They look at transportation, energy efficiency. And in this case, they looked at CCA and they saw by far that was the single biggest thing they could do. And this is fairly consistent with what we've seen with the draft climate action plan with the City of San Mateo and the City of Wana Creek and other people I'm working with in the Bay Area. And the reason is because the electricity generated to serve the customers of that jurisdiction is by far the largest single source of greenhouse gas emissions. And even though those emissions don't take place right here, they take place at the power plants, it's used to serve the load in those communities. So, we include that in the carbon footprint calculation of a city. And that is why a CCA is, again, assuming here that you have renewable energy mix that's at least similar to Marin Clean Energy, the first one that launched, you have a big climate impact there. I'll skip over this slide very, very quickly, but the, we estimate that the startup CCA be somewhere between 1.3 and 1.5 million for all the technical studies and all the public outreach and other fees that are associated with setting up a program. Those fees are typically recovered. Sonoma's CCA launched a couple, last year, they spent 1.6 million. Most of that's been recovered through the rates. CCAs have public bonding authority and can initiate local power projects. They are also, one of the reasons why we think that the rates are somewhat lower than PG&E's because CCAs have very low overhead, no shareholder profits, that kind of thing. The last line there I'll just mention is, in terms of the volume of funding that we're talking about here or money that would go through a CCA, we estimate that, you know, over $350 million is spent on electricity generation only in the county. We've seen, again, you'll see the rate comparison in a minute, but because both Marin and Sonoma have had lower rates, not hugely less, 5%, 8% or so, but if you add that up, it has it being a lot of money. So, MCE, Marin Clean Energy, their customers have saved $6 million in 2014. The Sonoma County one, which has launched in phases, only the Phase 1, which included just the commercial customers, that's saved customers about $6 million. And city officials are always interested in municipal operations, what the savings could be there. You can see there, San Rafael, Richmond, the West Contra Costa Unified School District all saved, you know, the many tens of thousands of dollars in 2014 alone. Now, we can't guarantee that the rates will stay, or no CCA should say you can guarantee that rates would stay lower forever, but this is just illustrative of what we've seen so far. So, launching into Marin Clean Energy a little bit, again, I'll go through this fairly quickly. The point here is they've launched a fairly aggressive local build-out program, so both Marin and Sonoma are working very hard to build as much local renewable generation capacity as possible. Marin's got 177 megawatts in the pipeline, believe Sonoma has about 70 or so in the pipeline. That has translated into, well, the program so far has translated into over 130 million pounds of carbon dioxide reductions to date. All of that local generation capacity has created a number of jobs. You see there about 1,800 jobs. So, it's, they've really made efforts to make this a local economic development program as well as an environmental improvement program. They have, each member of the JPA has a seat of the Board of Directors, and it includes all the cities of, that are in Marin County, as well as the City of Richmond. They are soon going to be adding the cities of San Pablo and El Cerrito and unincorporated Napa, I believe. So, that's Marin. You can see here that their rates are, well, the default product is a little bit lower than PG&E. This is for a typical residential customer. Marin actually has a number of products that people can choose from. The automatic default is 50% renewable energy content compared to PG&E's 22%, that's just for your reference. So, they are, you can see their delivery charges are the same because that's from PG&E's, the generation charges that we're looking at here. Marin also has a 100% what they call deep green program that customers can voluntarily opt into, and that includes some renewable energy that's not local, it's from out of state, includes some renewable energy certificates. So, they have another option, which is a bit more expensive, that's 100% local solar. What that means is that if you sign up for that program, you're buying electrons that come from, represent your demand from that facility. So, if you consume 500 kilowatt-hours in a month, you know, that will program, that local solar plant, 500 kilowatt-hours of that will be charged to you, and it represents your consumption from that facility. Doesn't mean that the electrons actually go into your house because, of course, doesn't generate electricity at night, but that's the basic principle. So, here, this is for a typical commercial customer. You can see that both the light green and deep green are lower than PG&E. The light green, you know, it's fairly, you know, it's not a huge difference, but over time, again, it adds up. And I know a lot of business customers are, have been interested in this because, you know, they're perhaps more concerned about energy costs than the typical homeowner. Here, I've kind of mentioned this, there's a number of local projects that Marin Clean Energy is developing. One notable one is actually on the property of Chevron, building a solar plant there. They have a 1-megawatt solar facility at the San Rafael Airport and others that are scattered around the county. Sonoma Clean Power, again, they've just phased, they just phased in the residential customers. They started with their 22,000 commercial customers. They have, actually, there's one point up there which I'll mention, and they have a very low opt-out rate. That means that only, whatever, 7.4% of the people, or the consumers, energy consumers, I should say, when the program launched, only 7.4% of them opted out. Marin was much higher, for reasons I can go into, Marin's like 20% or so. But as CCAs become more, I think, more established, more well-known, we're seeing that the opt-out rates, the number of people or consumers that are choosing to go back to PG&E go down somewhat. They have a, they've started a 33% renewable energy product, and they have 100% renewable energy product, most of that coming from the geysers, they're lucky enough to be living near a large geothermal plant. And they have 70 megawatts of new solar in the pipeline as well. So, I would be remiss if I were to say that a CCA is a completely riskless venture. We can, we, I say we, a community choice program cannot guarantee, as I said, that rates will be lower forever. We think that there are some structural advantages that local community choice programs have. I mentioned them before, about, you know, small staff, nonprofit status, that kind of thing. But it is possible that, over time, rates can change. And, you know, when CCAs go to the market to procure their power and to start building facilities to generate their own power, that rates could change. If you have a rate, rates are not as competitive, obviously you have a higher opt-out rate. And that's something that a CCA don't like to see because a smaller customer base can be problematic for the overall financial viability. We have seen, though, that the one way, I think, way to mitigate this risk is that, in a sense, PG&E and Marin Clean Energy and Sonoma, they are going to be procuring power from the same sources, and we believe, especially with the much, much lowering costs that we're seeing for renewable energy, can be great competitive into the future. But the point is to have good staff that are qualified and really can understand the power markets and can procure power out there, just like the investor-owned utilities can. The second major risk, I would say, is that there's always some political and regulatory risks. So, there's a number of different, sort of more arcane procedures, procedural actions that are going on at the Public Utility Commission that can have an effect on the overall competitiveness of a CCA. So, just because things are good today doesn't necessarily mean that things are going to be just as rosy tomorrow. But both Marin and Sonoma and Lean Energy, I should say, have representation. They go up there, they talk to the legislature, and they talk to PUC staff. Just recently, actually, there was a bill that would have made CCA an opt-in program instead of an opt-out program. It died in the Senate. But, again, those are the things that one has to think about when setting up a community choice program. We have been encouraging communities that are interested in looking at this to act now. One of the reasons why we think that the CCAs have been able to have lower rates is because they've been able to procure power in the wholesale market at times when the power market's pretty cheap. The utilities have been fully resourced through 2020, so there seems to be excess power available on the market. Gas prices are very low, so the non-renewable portion of a community choice program's energy mix, which is usually gas, is, has been able to come in pretty low. And, of course, there's affordable financing available, we don't know how long that's going to last. So, we think that the next few years are good to lock in some strong pricing, some good contracts. We don't know what the future will hold, but that's, these are some of the market indicators that we're seeing so far. I guess you've already done this, so this slide may be a little bit out of date, but one of the things that we need to do from all the cities is to get letters to authorize the collection of load data, which you have provided, that will help us complete the technical study in order to figure out how much energy we need to be procured from the market for a CCA program. That's it. Boy, that was exactly 15 minutes. So, I hope I didn't go through that too quickly, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Good. Any questions for Seth?
I have heard this four times now.
Gosh, I'm so sorry.
No, no. I always learn something every time I see it, so, no, that was fine. And I do, I would encourage people to think about the fact that it is a choice. You don't have a choice now, this is a choice. And I was talking to some, one of the lawyers from one of the other community, community
CCAs.
CCAs, thank you, it's much easier. And he was saying, the bottom line is, if it all fails, you're no worse off than you are now. So, that's another piece of it, yes, there's risks. There's always risk for anything. There's risk for using PG&E too. So, it's an interesting, I think, and worthwhile study to go through, and I am looking forward to hearing what the outcome is. Do you actually know when that study's going to be finished?
The RFP for the study is going to be issued, I think, in a matter of a few weeks, I think. And usually, it takes two to three months to conduct the study. We have to get the load data from PG&E, and that's an eight to 12-week process there, so, yeah, those two together. I would say we're looking at probably fall.
Okay.
We have actually a very set timeline, I just don't have it memorized in my head. But you did bring up a good point in that, is that the, one of the costs of setting up a CCA program is a bond that helps cover the costs of switching customers back. So, if a CCA fails, again, you know, the worst thing state law provides for customers is simply to be returned back to PG&E service.
Right. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You kept it to 15 minutes, so you could probably come back another time, so, that would be great.
I never know, should I rush through them or, you know?
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if I might, Dave Berudo would be able to give any additional clarification that the council may want in terms of the process here in San Mateo County. I would just say that, having heard this presentation at the City Managers Group a month or so ago, and knowing that Supervisor Pine and some other persons in the county are very actively working towards this feasibility study, all of the cities were requested to provide authorization simply to, for the county to be able to ask PG&E for data related to electrical usage in each of our communities. I have authorized that. There is, as Mr. Baruch indicated, that provides no obligation to the City of San Bruno, and even if the feasibility study were to generate a positive result, there are still a number of decision points for the City Council to consider once the information is available and the steering committee on the, that's working on this within the county, can render a comprehensive recommendation. So, it's my understanding that we would be in the timeframe consistent with what you just heard, roughly a year from now before any concrete go-no-go decisions would need to be made. Seth, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, David Berudo from Supervisor Pine's office. A pleasure to speak with you. The timeframe, you know, there's a couple of tracks that we're pursuing now, so we've fortunately received the load data from every city in San Mateo County, which was really critical for us because it provides us the data necessary to really see what we use and how we use it. And that's going to really help us shed some light on what the CCA may look like and how you go about procuring power and looking at, you know, doing that forecasting as necessary. As Seth said, you know, for the cities, there really is minimal risk in that, yes, we're bonded, it'll be its own entity, so the City of San Bruno is never on the hook for anything. It's the entity, it's the CCA, not the city. One of the tracks we're pursuing now is to set up a steering committee that'll consist of all the cities plus some other interested stakeholders. So, we would, of course, welcome a member of the council and perhaps a staff alternate to sit on that steering committee. We'll contact you soon about that. Once we get the load data, which, again, we're requesting now, which will take maybe six to eight weeks, then we can also then hopefully meet that timeframe for getting the consultants on board. The RFP is going out shortly, so we'll hopefully have them by early summer. That study takes maybe a couple of months, so perhaps by August, we'll have that feasibility study done. At that point, we'll return and start having a larger dialogue about how we want to proceed. But, again, we want you on that steering committee even before that, so you can have your input, we can start designing what this will look like, its governance structure, what the vision is for the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Anything for Dave? Irene?
Dave, you want to talk about the startup costs and how the county is willing to put those up?
Thank you for queuing that up. Again, yes, you know, we envision that the county will absorb those costs. So, that one and a half million dollars to do the study and do some of the early work, again, the cities are not going to be asked to do that, and we'll hopefully recover that in the rate structure. So, again, for San Bruno, this is really, again, it's something you're not really going to notice very much if you choose to do it. Pretty easy.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Yes, I would just like to assure every individual that the information that is gathered has, is not personal, it is an aggregate information about what electricity we use as a group, so nobody's names anywhere. So, people should know that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. All right, item six, approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of February 24, 2015, and the special City Council meeting of February 26, 2015. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none, they'll stand approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member or staff. Any action on consent?
If there be none, move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar. Only question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Public hearing, number eight, we don't have any public hearings this evening. Public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and their action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda as pursuant to state law. Mr. Rico?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the Steering Committee for the Re-Dev-for-Life 2015 event to just remind you that we're going to do Paint the Mall Purple Saturday, March 21, and Sunday, March 22, 11 to 3, in the shops of Tanforan, where we've done it previously, first floor, down at the bottom of the escalators. We are scheduling some performances. There will be information on cancer, and you can sign up to join the team, form a team, make a donation, and this is all leading up to our abbreviated 24-hour event. We're going to have to walk twice as fast. We're doing 13 hours, starting at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 25, around the cappuccino track. So, we hope to see all the council, a lot of the city staff, and hopefully many San Bruno residents.
Great.
And thank you for your continuing support.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else? Okay. Was informed, I skipped over number five review of the agenda, but we are not going to do anything to the agenda this evening, so.
I believe you're pulling 10C.
Well, you want me to give that to you now, Connie?
Yes, please. Staff requests that you pull item 10C on tonight's
Okay.
Conductive business agenda. Staff would appreciate some additional time to deal with. Staff would appreciate some additional time to deal with some procedural issues and to bring this back to the city council as quickly as possible.
Okay, great. Any other items on the agenda, one addressed? Okay. We'll get right into Conduct of Business. Our first item is adopt a resolution approving the amendments to the City of San Bruno Investment Policy. Angie?
I remembered to turn the speaker on this time.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The item before you this evening is the City of San Bruno Investment Policy. In the past, the government, California Government Code required an annual review of the city's invest -- investment policy. While this is no longer required, it is recommended by both the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada and the Government Finance Officers Association, or otherwise known as the GFOA. The city's current investment policy has not been updated since March 27, 2012, and the policy before you tonight includes some minor recommended changes, namely reformatting and cleaning up some of the document. Additional changes include incorporating language taken directly from the California Government Code, Section 53600, which governs the investments from municipal governments. This was included in order to increase the clarification of the code, which was previously a little too vague. I'm going to turn it over to John Marty, the city treasurer, and once he has completed his comments, we would both be happy to answer any questions that you have about the policy.
John? Thank you, Angie. I wanted to bring to your attention that probably for the next, I'm going to say, nine to 12 months, you're going to see a significant portfolio turnover. The federal government is no different than any one of us in this room. They're refinancing their debt, and they're calling a lot of their outstanding debt. We own, of course, Federal Agency Paper. That is a type of paper that's very typical of getting redeemed early. So you're going to see, I believe, a lot of turnover within the portfolio. It's not necessarily a bad thing. It's, there's always available options to replace them, but I'll bring that to your attention in case you look from month to month, you're going to see changes within the portfolio, and that's the real reason why. Things will mature early, or, excuse me, be redeemed early, which will force us to make a decision. With respect to interest rates, really not much has changed. I don't see the outlook changing much, again, over the next nine to 12 months. It's always a challenge in this environment to find a decent yield. I would suggest to you, the, you look at a yield curve, the best value for the dollar right now is one to three years out. So you'll probably see me look at those types of maturities, again, keeping within our policy, looking at federal farm credit, federal home loan bank, those types of issues. So I wanted to bring that to your attention because I think it'll be greater than, the turnover will be greater than it has been in the past.
Okay.
That completes our report. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Angie or John? Any action by the council?
Move to approve, or, no. Move to introduce the resolution? So the resolution?
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10B, adopt a resolution approving property owner notice and protest process for 2015-16 garbage rate increase proposed by Recology San Bruno.
It's me again.
Okay.
The city's franchise agreement with Recology San Bruno allows for an annual rate adjustment. A detailed rate year analysis is prepared every two to three years, with the next one being scheduled to begin January of 2016, with an effective date of July 1, 2016. An interim rate year analysis is done in the opposite years. On January 30, 2015, Recology San Bruno requested an interim rate year adjustment in accordance with the franchise agreement. The adjustment blends 80% of the change in the San Francisco area Consumer Price Index and the percentage increase of authorized pass-through expenses. The net calculated increase for 2015-16 is 1.652%, which city staff did verify. Based on the proposed rate adjustment, charges for a 20-gallon residential totter will increase by .36, and a 32-gallon totter will increase by .46. The item before the council tonight is the approval of moving forward from, for the 45-day property owner notice and protest process as defined by Proposition 218. No action on the proposed rate increases are being requested at this time. Public notices are anticipated to be mailed out on March 23, and approval of the proposed increase will be brought back to the council for the public hearing on May 12, with the increase taking effect on July 1. Kristen Pinocchio, Pinocchio, Pinocchio. Pinocchio, sorry. From Recology is here tonight, and we are both available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for our finance director or Recology?
Well, we should ask her something. We know she won't be able to lie.
Okay. We're getting rummy at 7:35. It's not a good sign, so. Any action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10C has been pulled. Item 11, reported commissions boards and committees, there aren't any this evening. Comments from council members?
Through the chair. Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate Mr. Reekel for making this announcement, but I was hoping he'd give another announcement this Saturday, this Sunday, March, Sunday, March 15. We're conducting a, our annual Relay for Life Survivor and Caregiver Breakfast. It's a free breakfast for all survivors and all caregivers. If they've heard the, if they've heard the words "you have cancer," then they're welcome to come, and we will try to spoil them and feed them and, you know, take care of them in the morning. It is 9:00 to 11:00 AM. All we ask is that you RSVP. There is, I don't have the information with me, but relayforlife.org/ sanbrunoca and or contact me. There's many ways to get ahold of me. But we really want to take just that short time on Sunday to honor those survivors and those families that have endured this disease and, you know, and celebrate, celebrate their life, and hopefully we'll get a good crowd. The San Bruno Lions will be, will be feeding them, so that's always a good thing. And hopefully we'll have really good weather, and it'll be at the rec center, and all you can eat. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? I would just like to say, I think I mentioned it briefly before, San Bruno this Thursday evening is going to be awarded the James Madison Freedom of Information Award for our Public Records Act lawsuit that forced the disclosure of tens of thousands of California Public Utilities Commission emails that showed very unethical relationships between the CPUC staff and Pacific Gas and Electric Company executives following our 2010 natural gas pipeline explosion, in which eight of our residents were killed. So that'll be this Thursday evening at the City Club in San Francisco. It's quite an honor, and we're, we just want to get it out there. You all deserve it. Closed session, we are going into closed session. Public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957, city attorney. And in, Carol, do you have something? Oh, okay. In closing, I just want to wish everybody, next Tuesday, a happy St. Patrick's Day. We're going to adjourn this meeting until our next regular city council meeting, right here on March 24.